Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee to order at 6:30 PM. Do notice having been posted. Let the record show that this meeting is being electronically recorded. And if anyone in the audience also wishes to electronically record this meeting, you should notify the committee at this time. Any such recording may be subject to reasonable restrictions imposed by the chair to the extent permitted under the open meeting law.
Everyone's there, the USAR?
Thank you. All right. Roll call. Mr. Larabee here. Mrs. Gagliardi.
Here.
Mr. Giliducci here. Mrs. Field.
Yeah.
We have a quorum. Also present with us this evening is Superintendent of Schools Jeffrey Schoonover, Director of Business and Finance Lindsay Albernaz, and our Recording Secretary, Robin Pecaro. I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the reply of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next meeting has been scheduled for Thursday, August 24th, at 6:30 PM here at the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library. However, I received an email from the superintendent this morning saying he's not available on August 24th. Is that just one day, or is that for the week?
Let's see, the 20, no, was it?
I'm not available on the 24th.
It was, Mr. Larabee, he was not available on the 24th.
Oh, I thought it was...
No, I'm available.
Did you send the superintendent?
Just sent the tip off of your...
We were both on that.
All right, I was confused. I thought it was the superintendent.
Darn tweets.
All right. Well, is it just that one day, Dean, or is it that week?
I can do Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, that week.
Well, maybe we can check, see if we can reschedule a meeting for Wednesday. They'll send out the doodle hole. So stay tuned as to the date of our next meeting. First item we have in the agenda is the superintendent's update. Okay, Schoonover?
And just before I get into that, on the 21st of that week is a Somerset School Committee meeting, so the 22nd and 23rd seem to be available. Nice.
Berkeley's on Monday also.
Okay.
Okay, so I believe a memo has been passed down. I wanted to put things in writing for you, just so you can see some of the things. There's a lot of information here. The first, I just want to share with you, as I do each August, a quick update on the, a summary of our advanced placement results, which usually come in sometime during the month of July. This past May, we did offer AP exams in 15 different subjects, 13 of which are normally part of our program. Two classes were also offered through Virtual High School, where we had, I think, two students take AP Government and another student took AP Computer Science through that format. But we had 220 students, complete 348 exams. This is, this represents a 44% increase in the number of exams taken over the previous year. So we had many more exams administered, almost 100 more exams the past year. And over a two-year period, it represents a 33% increase. We did have a slight dip last year in the, in 2016, in the number of exams that were administered. So typically what you see is, from schools that really have a drastic increase in the percentage of exams that are taken, you tend to see a corresponding dip in the enrollment, sorry, in the achievement. We do see a slight dip. It really isn't by the, the number of exams that were given. It's not, I wouldn't say that significant. 75% of the exams administered earned a score of three or better compared to 83% last year and 78% the year before. The average score, 3.31, compared to 3.44 last year and 3.35 the year before that. And so in addition to that, that's just a very quick and general overview of how well the students performed this past year. But I also wanted to recognize and just share with you some individual achievement for, for the AP exams. So AP also has several awards that they give, or recognize students in different categories, AP Scholars, AP Scholars with Honor, AP Scholars with Distinction, and National AP Scholars. We did have 32 students who earned the recognition of AP Scholar, and they get that by earning a three or better on at least three exams. We had 18 students earn AP Scholar with honors, and that is having an average score of 3.25 on all of their AP exams taken in their high school history, and scores of three higher on four or more of the tests. AP Scholars with Distinction is averaging a 3.5 on all of the exams taken, and a three or higher on at least five exams. And I did list the 13 students there who, who did earn that honor. And one of those 13 is going into his senior year, so I already know we'll see his name perhaps moving into the next category next year. And one student earned the recognition of National AP Scholar, and this is when a student averages at least a four on all of their AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on at least eight exams. And Catherine Esten did that on nine exams.
Wow.
She had eight fives and a four during her, her history here, her enrollment here. And just in addition to that, last night I had the pleasure to, to talk with a graduate from the class of 2016, who went on to UMass Dartmouth. She went in as a sophomore. She had 30 credits that she carried over from Somerset Berkeley, and immediately went into her sophomore year. So, you know, there is, not all students take AP, but we, we see more of them. It's only one measure of a high school, but we, we are seeing some really great achievement from our students, and they're challenging themselves more and more and giving themselves those early college experiences. So in addition to that, I just wanted to share a few grant announcements. We recently received our Title I and Title II allocations from the Massachusetts Department of Education. These are federal grants, so I have the numbers listed there. Title I is $73,0571, which actually represents a decrease of almost $13,000 over the previous year. And our Title II allocation is roughly $19,000, which is up about $5,500 over FY17. Ms. Haskell is now working on the applications for those grants. Those are the allocations that we've had. She now will, she has until the end of September to write grants, telling the state how we plan on using that money.
Are both those directed towards reading or professional development?
Title II, thank you. Title II is a professional development grant. That's an Educated Quality Grant from the US Department of Education. That is also one of the grants that's received some headlines recently. It's, the, I believe it's the House, the US House has recommended eliminating the Title II grants going forward. So we don't know what's happening there, but that is for educated quality. Title I is, is a grant to, that's awarded to schools based on a certain percentage of socioeconomic status. So it, there's a, there's a poverty number contributed to that, but it is to assist in students with literacy and/or math. And every school district is entitled to Title I money because we are a one-building school. We receive those funds. Somerset High School never received Title I funding when it was part of the Somerset K-12 system. Only the elementary schools do. You tend to have, there's, we have far more students who, at the elementary level, who are either receiving free or reduced lunch, or, you know, are, are in the state systems for some reason or another. And as students age, we tend to have less percentage, as you all know. So this is a grant that we didn't receive up until 2011, 2012. I learned today, Mrs. Troutman shared with me that she received a $4,000 grant from the Hathaway Memorial Trust to continue the envisioning Somerset project. This money will be to replace the banners that we currently have around Somerset and Berkeley with some new student-generated photos. So I'm sure that this will be a project. I'm not sure what her timeline is. She just learned of this today, but I'm sure that she will get her students actively involved in this as soon as they return. I also referenced this at our last meeting. I said how we had received a $15,000 grant. The Education Committee of the Greater Florida Development Corporation awarded Somerset Berkeley $15,000 to assist us with the purchase of technology equipment to support the TV production program. So that's great news, and we want to thank both the Hathaway Memorial Trust and the Greater Florida Development Corporation. And Paul Johnkis, who is the president of that corporation, presented us with, with Lindsay and I with the check. Is that early in this week? Last Friday. Regarding school choice, just wanted to give you a quick update on that. We had our second round, our second drawing for school choice. According to school committee policy, we had one at the beginning of the summer and another that takes place during the first week in August. We currently have 15 freshmen coming in to the high school under school choice. The school committee in May voted to have 20 seats available, so we still do have five remaining seats. And at this point, until October 1st, we will fill those on a rolling basis. So as we get applications, we will fill those seats. And lastly, just wanted to share with you some information about the leadership retreat that we had this week. I met with my team on Mon, I'm sorry, Tuesday and Wednesday, August 1st and 2nd. On Tuesday, it was with all of our principals, assistant principals, directors, and content coordinators between both districts. The, and on Wednesday, it was a smaller group of the directors, principals, and assistant principals. The essential question that guided our work was, how can we unleash the power of data to improve and inspire teaching and learning? We all received a copy of a book called Using Data to Improve Learning for All. This, we handed that out at our June 27th meeting with the same group of people. Everyone had a reading assignment from then until August 1st, and we started our day reviewing the information, discussing the information in there, and then everything following that built upon the information that we read and discussed. So it turned into focusing on how we're going to use our common professional time that we have through the, the time is built into their schedule, but also the early release days. And the focus points this year will be developing common formative assessments, and then also using, then using the time to analyze those results and then make modifications as needed. And the other component that we spent time on, really related to this, as part of our strategic plan, is developing a peer observation model. We want to develop teacher leadership and teacher, teacher sharing best practices with each other. So we also plan on using that during their professional time that they have together. And we talked about various models, various ways that we can do that, possibly similar to the way that administrators conduct their learning walks currently, looking for specific things and collecting evidence, or teachers going in and really sharing, more observing the teacher for how they're handling, how they're presenting technology in their class or something like that. So it's more professional development, rather than going in and identifying what they're doing and how, and providing that feedback. So that really drove most of our time that we had earlier this week. It was a really great, positive two days, and we'll, we'll continue to build upon that as we go into the beginning of the school year.
Do you know what the demographic is for the 15 school choice, what communities they're from?
I haven't broken it down yet. Mostly they are from Fall River, but I haven't narrowed it down by town just yet.
Any other questions?
Like, I believe that the two that we just received this, today, were both from Fall River.
All right, so next we have, oh, let our record, the record show that Mrs. Tara joined at the beginning of the superintendent's presentation. So under New Business, we have Policy Subcommittee Update. Actually, we have several policies there on for a second reading. So I don't know.
Yep. So we, the Policy Subcommittee has not had a chance to meet since our June meeting due to priority of the Berkeley meetings in early July. So a lot of the comments that were discussed at the June meeting, the Policy Subcommittee has not reviewed at this time. So starting with the first policy, the Acceptable Use Policy Computer Care Maintenance and Support Agreement, second reading. At the June meeting, there were some questions that were brought up in a memo by Mrs. Gagliardi, and it was, it was asked that we would address these issues at the Policy Subcommittee level with the principal, so he could have some feedback. But again, since we did not hold that Policy Subcommittee meeting at this time, I'm asking that we table the second reading of that particular policy until we're able to get input from administration and meet as a subcommittee.
Where do we, Mr. Schoonover, where do we stand with the implementation? Are we, as we discussed, we're waiting for budget approval before we move forward with that?
Yes.
So we do have the opportunity to look at this at our next school committee meeting?
Absolutely. So if, if the budget is approved at the Berkeley Special Town Meeting, and we're able to order shortly after that, we're looking at some, an October rollout.
Do we want to? This meeting is right before the Berkeley Special Town Meeting. The Berkeley Special Town Meeting is the 28th. So if we schedule a meeting the week before, then we can address this policy at that time instead of pumping it out to the 2nd, 30th September or so.
Well, the only thing, the, the week, the following week is the first week with teachers reporting. It's a pretty busy week for you, I would assume, Mr. Schoonover. I don't, I don't know why, if, we can, we can act on this policy even without the meeting and knowing for certain that the budget has been approved, I think, we'll have this policy in place.
Can, can we vote on it with the caveat that it will be implemented upon rollout of the one-to-one program? I'm just asking that question because it...
I would be in favor of that because if the policy, upon the second reading, if the policy is in effect immediately, then, and let's just say that happens at the end of August, beginning of September, by the policy, students would not be able to bring in their own devices and use their own devices in class, whether it's a phone or a, their own personal laptop, until the, the rollout occurs. I would not want to prohibit students from using a computer or Chromebook in class if they choose to bring it in.
I mean, so if we don't do that, then we know that there's going to be a delay in the rollout anyway at this point, right? So we, we could actually just postpone it till closer to when it's possible that we could roll out the one-to-one initiative, rather than do it with that caveat. So I would recommend one of those two options, but I kind of lean towards the second.
All right, so, all right, so that, rather than defer it to the next meeting, why don't we just table this, this particular policy, and we'll put it back on the agenda when it's appropriate.
Okay.
So can I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi, seconded by Mrs. Field. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any others? All right.
All right. The second policy up for second reading, Mrs. Albernaz has provided for us, it's the Athletic and Extracurricular Fee Policy. Just to recap from the June meeting, there was dialogue around the timing of the collection of payment. It was asked that we get feedback from the director, the athletic director, which you will all provide with in a memo in your packet. Those changes were made in the, the handout that Mrs. Albernaz had for today, under payment terms. So if you see that one there, yep. So are you opening up to any additional questions?
That's fine. That addresses the issue we had, so I don't think there are any other issues. Does anyone else have any other comments about the Athletic and Extracurricular Fee policy? Not all entertain a motion to approve the policy on a second reading.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Field, seconded by Mr. Larabee. Any discussion? The absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Opposed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. So we have five in the affirmative and one in the negative. Mrs. Tara votes in the negative. Okay, so...
The next policy is the Sports Related Extracurricular Activities Concussion Policy. Again, at our June meeting, we went over the changes extensively. There were no, there were no substantive changes or issues that need to be addressed prior to the second reading. You were provided with both the red line as well as a clean copy of the policy, so I'll entertain any questions if you have them. Just to reiterate as well, the athletic director was present at the Policy Subcommittee meeting prior to the June meeting, and we did gather his input and worked extensively, which is what you saw in the first reading, were his suggestions and changes.
I think you did an excellent job. It's a very comprehensive policy. It includes not only sports activities, but certain extracurricular activities where it is possible that injuries could be sustained. There, there are a few minor typographical things in this policy that I have marked. I'll give it to you, Robert, and you can just pass it along, but it's nothing at all substantive, so I think we can go ahead and approve this policy. So I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Field and seconded by Mrs. Gagliardi. Is there any discussion? Absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
The next policy is the Student Attendance Policy. At our last meeting, there was discussion regarding the timing of the absentee calls as well as the definition of truancy. Prior to second reading, it was asked that administration consult with the principal on the timing of the calls and the definition of truancy. I did go through the policy, Mr. Schoonover, that was in the packet, and I didn't see an update. So you, I know you had a conversation with Mr. Ranskinsky if you'd like.
Yeah, so first of all, let me see. Regarding the absences, we are, the practice has been that calls are made the day of, the morning of, the absence. There is, so even though it says if no calls made, the school will notify the parents, guardians, within three days of the absence, all call, all calls are made that day. So the policy just needs to reflect that change.
Thank you. And definition of truancy, Mr. Schoonover?
And I'm sorry for that. I had, we talked about the getting the truancy definition from the Department of Education, and it's not in, obviously not in this document that you have.
Given these slight changes, is it possible to have the second reading at the next meeting? Or is the committee comfortable with administration making those changes?
As long as we approve those changes. It's pretty much the same making that.
When will this be posted, Mr. Schoonover?
It is shared with students upon their return to school.
And not before? So if we meet the last week of the month, we...
Right, there's no, since it's changed, there's no, it's always been handed out on the first day of school before, when it was a paper copy. So the electron, having the electronic copy before September 5th, they've never had access to it before, so we would just go lively with it around then.
I mean, I think we should approve of those two changes. Everything else looks fine.
Well, we don't have a definition of truancy, and we don't have the specific language on... Do you have a specific change to this provision about notifying parents, Mr. Schoonover, or should we?
Yes, it would go to one day, as the practice is.
I'm sorry?
It would go to one day.
The school will notify the parents on the day of the absence.
So in the second, the second sentence, it says if no call is made, the school will notify the parents, guardians, within one day?
I wouldn't, I mean, I would say on the, on the, on the day of the absence, because within one day gives us the flexibility of 24 hours extending to the next day, which is not how we do it. And often those calls go out in the morning, even prior to lunch.
All right, but, so that's fine, but we don't have a definition of truancy?
Were we looking for a specific definition? Or are we looking...
Mr. Larabee pointed out that while there was a definition of, is it tardy or, or...
Yeah, we have an extensive definition of tardiness.
Then there, there are penalties for class truancy, but no definition.
Mr. Pierce, can I ask why these policies are on the agenda if they're not ready to be approved?
Because the agenda carried over from the meeting that was rescheduled last week. And with the meetings that happened in Berkeley, there was some shuffling of subcommittee meetings.
If we posted it without it, save time. Just saying. Okay, I motion to table it till the next meeting so it can be looked at by administration. Okay, I motion to table it till the next meeting so it can be looked at by administration.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Right, motion made by Mrs. Tera and seconded by Mr. Larrabee. Any further discussion? The absence of discussion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? All right, next.
The last piece is the student handbook changes for second reading. They were approved at our last meeting in June, and they're, according to the motion, there were no substantive changes going into the second reading. So you have... You were also provided with the handbook changes.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed handbook changes on second reading.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Field and seconded by Mrs. Tera. Any discussion? The absence of discussion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Next item on the agenda is to consider appointment of a school physician. Mr. Schoonover?
Okay, you have the appointment letter here from last summer for Dr. Frias, who has been the school physician for Somerset, Berkeley for the past three years. This is her stipend for services is $1,500. That has not changed. By law, we are required to have a school physician appointed by the school committee.
All right, and do we have an indication that she's willing to continue to serve?
She is. And she's also indicated that she would be willing to come in and provide, maybe participate in our parent academy and talk about some of the things that she deals with, that she sees from teenagers coming into her office. So she is very willing to help us out in other areas, too, that our school physicians have not participated in before.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to appoint Dr. Catherine E. Frias as the Somerset, Berkeley Regional School District physician for the 2016-2017 school year.
Quick question. This is 2017, 2018, right?
I'm sorry, yes.
These letters are...
2017, 2018.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mr. Larrabee. Any further discussion? The absence of discussion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, next is annual school building inspection. We have an inspection form. Generally, we've done a building inspection just before the beginning of the school year. And so we can determine who would like to participate in a tour of the building and prepare the inspection report. Probably would be done the last week of August. And... So...
I'm unable to participate this year.
Okay.
Use my work schedules.
Well, we might do it in the early evening.
If it's before a meeting or on a weekend, like, be available.
I could do it in the evening.
Well, we do have custodial staff in the evening.
We do.
And perhaps Mr. Campos could be available.
He always does.
Very accommodating. So...
Why don't we schedule it in advance of our next meeting? Would we look at that one, or is that too soon?
Depending on when that takes place.
Are we looking at the 28th now?
22nd or 23rd?
It was set for the 23rd.
I could do either of those.
Why don't we just move it one day to the 23rd if everyone's available at night?
Yep.
Sure.
I am.
We can do it.
Can I ask why we're having another meeting in August? What would be the precedent to having another?
I'm sorry?
What would be the precedent of having another meeting before school starts?
Because this is the July meeting. We had no meeting in July. This is the July meeting. And so we scheduled a meeting at the end of August, and...
We have a July meeting.
No, we postponed our July meeting.
Okay.
So why don't we plan to schedule it then for, say, 5:30 on the date of our, the 23rd? Okay, so...
24th? Before our meeting?
23rd.
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 We're changing the meeting to the 23rd.
Okay, sorry.
All right, so the next item is to appoint the superintendent to the 2017-2018 Board of Directors of Project Contemporary Competitiveness. So, Mr. Schoonover, do you, at least from my edification, I'm not sure others on the board may be familiar with the project on contemporary competitiveness? If I'm not?
Sure. This is the program at Stone Hill College that runs during the summer months where students from grades, it changes each year. They keep expanding it, I believe it's now from entering grade eight until possibly the junior year of high school, where they stay on campus for a number of weeks and experience essentially college life and a number of different unique classrooms, classes that they normally wouldn't have an experience to participate in. I know aviation is one such program. It's rather unique. But there are a number of programs that students participate in, and they have, I think about 150 or so students who participate each summer. I believe Mr. Lynch is actually the, I think he's now the executive director of PCC. And we do have a handful of students who participate each summer in that.
All right, so now that you remind me, I am familiar with the program. Mr. Lynch was very involved in it. So have we sent any students to that program this summer?
We have, yes.
Do we give any financially? Is there a cost affiliated with the program?
There is a cost, and the fee for the district is, I believe it's $1 per student.
$1?
One, for the, that the district pays to...
Right.
It's $1 or $2 per student that the district pays.
Yes.
To PCC. And then students also pay a nominal fee to attend.
I think it's more than nominal.
I was gonna say, how...
Well, for a six-week stay at Stone Hill College.
Right.
I mean, it's not, it's not $50, but for six weeks out of college, it's also, it's not as much as what I would expect, as what students would find in other, at all the colleges for a single week.
Yes. Are there scholarships available for this type of program?
Through PCC, I'm not aware. I'm not sure.
Okay.
All right, well, you're interested in serving on this board? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Schoonover to the Board of Directors of Project Contemporary Competitiveness.
Still moved?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion made by Mrs. Field and Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mr. Larrabee and Mr. Giliducci.
You're in.
Any discussion? The absence of discussion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? So next, under Budget and Financial Matters, Berkeley Proposition 2 1/2 override vote. So we discussed this when we met in July for the budget discussion. You're right, Mrs. Tera, we did have a July meeting, but it was for a very specific and limited purpose, so... So, Mr. Larrabee, would you like to bring us up to date on what's been going on in your fine community?
Yes, in Berkeley, there's been meetings held over the past couple of weeks that have resulted in a special town meeting being scheduled for August 28th. It's a Monday at 7 o'clock. Special town meeting will be held at our middle school. Purpose of the special town meeting is to address a couple of loose ends from the budget process, from the budget that was passed at regular town meeting in June. One of those is the Somerset, Berkeley Regional High School assessment, which is article number one.
Who said, huh?
Yeah. The override would have created a situation where we wouldn't have to do this, but as a result of the override failure, the special town meeting is necessary for approval of the regional assessment. At this point in time, there's been a selectmen's meeting and a finance committee meeting where both of those boards have unanimously supported the assessment. So at this point in time, optimistic that when it gets in front of our voters on August the 28th, that they'll see it the same way as leadership has so far.
So that would be fully funding the regional assessment?
Capital assessment's already been passed, so this is the operational assessment.
And at the approval of town meeting, that doesn't mean that they won't be going to another vote, so at the approval of town meeting...
Our town meeting, correct. That would be the end of the process for Berkeley.
So do you think that we need to meet after that in case something happens, or...
I was mentioning that.
I was just wondering, like, then should we schedule the meeting for the 31st instead? Because I'm sure we want to talk about what happened.
Mr. Pierce had indicated that that's a busy week for Mr. Schoonover, just the beginning of the school year for teachers.
So regardless of what happened, we're not going to have a meeting?
No, that isn't necessarily true. We can schedule a meeting if we need to. It appears that everything is moving positively in Berkeley, and so I'm optimistic that it won't be necessary. But we'll be looking at it because the joint town meeting that follows only requires 14 days' notice. So we'll be thinking about that situation and perhaps discuss it at our meeting. But...
We were optimistic before, so...
I know. A lot more optimistic than me. Yeah, it could be some sensibility in just having a meeting scheduled on the opposite side of the Berkeley special town meeting. That way, we wouldn't have to have a emergency meeting, because we want to schedule the joint town meeting as quickly as possible, I would imagine, correct?
Yes, but, you know, there are certain logistical issues that probably would allow us to do it in 14 days, but... So can we do it the last week? What day do teachers report, Mr. Schoonover?
The 30th.
So the meeting is the 28th?
Could we give the meeting the 29th?
We, the 29th and 31st are both open that week. The 30th, we have contract negotiations that evening already, so those other two evenings are available, are open.
So why don't we do it on the 31st? And clear the 23rd? Do everything on the 31st? I just think it makes sense.
That's the, that's Thursday before Labor Day weekend.
20th is...
Some people may have plans for Labor Day weekend.
Right, but I'm saying, that's fine. If something happens, then we're...
No, but I'm thinking of the 29th.
Okay. All right, that's fine, too.
Thanks for me.
All right, so we'll change our meeting again to, I think, August 23rd to August 29th.
And it might be a celebration, actually, so either way, it's good that we're talking about it. Are we going to do the tour that day as well?
Sure.
Do everything that day?
Sure.
Yep.
That's awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
How much time do we normally use for the tour so that, if we're starting it at 5:30, or just, what's a 6:30?
Yeah.
First time for the school meeting?
I think it's about an hour.
Yeah, it's an hour.
Well...
You walk fast.
Mr. Pierce, you just show up like a week before and do your own solo thing. You had two hours, like, three hours.
We can do the articles as we walk through the hall.
Wasn't that the same as the middle? Three hours long?
Bring your makeup on.
Okay. Okay, so... The next item is approval of monthly invoices. Do we have?
Right.
We don't have any.
Oh, there's one for principal interest payments.
So the next item we have on the agenda is net metering credit purchase and sale agreement with Nexamp Solar LLC.
So we were approached, I would say, three months ago from Nexamp to enter into a net metering credit for a new array system that's being installed in Seacom on Woodland Ave. We do have one existing net metering credit with Clean Energy Collective right now, which we receive a 15% discount on the net metering credit off our national grid bill. This is an opportunity to have a second credit with an increased credit of 18.5%, so there'd be more savings. You do have a copy of the agreement. It's 24 pages. The highlights of the agreement are it's a 20-year term, similar to our Clean Energy Collective agreement. There is a termination clause in the event that the construction of the array system is not done within the time period of one year, because it hasn't been built yet, we can back out of the agreement if it's not done within that timeframe. So that's on page two. And then really just the financial terms of it start on page 22, where you will see the 18.5% net metering credit discount. So basically, how that works is, let's say we get a $10,000 credit off of our national grid bill. It's coming from Select, I'm sorry, I keep pulling up the other solar, just work with, Clean Energy Collective. So that $10,000 credit, we then get billed by Clean Energy, Clean Energy, at a rate of 8,500, just for raw terms, we're receiving a $1,500 credit in total for one month of service if that total credit is $10,000. So it kind of runs similar to this. This is 18.5%, so it's an increase of 3.5% compared to our Clean Energy Collective agreement. So just looking...
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Which part?
Difference, the credit, the amount of the credit?
It's, Clean Energy Collective, we have a 15% credit. This is 18.5%. So Nexamp would invoice us for, what is that, 81.5% versus 85%, which is what Clean Energy Collective is billing us for. So there's an increase with this agreement versus our first agreement with Clean Energy. Just on the last page, this is how those savings escalate as far as dollars are concerned, based on our energy. So we're looking at an annual savings of $27,000 the first year, and then it kind of builds in cumulative to $627,000 over the life of the term of the agreement.
And that's savings over our current energy expenditure?
Yes. It's above.
So, and this is in addition to, so we're already saving the 15% we said? On that? So then, is this the 18% taken off of the remain, what we...
So we have...
At base rate or the total rate? Do you know what I mean?
It's a separate credit. So right now, we get a credit on our existing national grid bill for our first net metering agreement with Clean Energy Collective. It can range from $5,000 to $11,000, I've seen, depending on our usage for the month. So then we get billed 85% of the dollar value of that credit from Clean Energy. We send them, you know, a check, because they invoice us. This is another credit added to our national grid bill, at which point Nexamp will bill us 81.5% of that credit. So it's really true savings if you add up what we're actually paying to National Grid, plus what we're paying to Clean Energy, plus what we would be paying to Nexamp. And there's also savings associated with the solar panel agreement, too, because we locked in a price with them as well, so...
Lindsay, what is our out clause as a district for this agreement? Is there one?
There isn't one, other than the fact if the project is not, does not move forward as scheduled, because it is a new array installation.
So by locking in, we're locking in for 20 years?
Just like we do with Clean Energy.
Has there ever been any risk analysis done on locking in? Maybe not, because it's so early in the process with solar. We haven't really gone back a number of years to see what that would be, but I would just be curious, with locking into these 20-year agreements, if there's any risk analysis done in that, with what we are already carrying on our other net meter and then also the solar panels, but there's probably nothing out there right now.
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, you know, I have the same concern, but even before we talk about that, the schedule, Exhibit C at the end, says that we're projected to be purchasing 863,534 kilowatts. 863,534 kilowatts. Now, I thought that we were purchasing or had credits for almost a million from the first agreement, and 350,000 from the most recent project, and that our total usage is about 2 million. So this number seems to exceed what we're currently using, and we've had some discussions about, you know, the possibility of doing what we can to reduce some of that consumption. So why are we, why are we projected to purchase 863,534 kilowatts?
So that's a great question. I actually, I'll introduce Charles Nutter. Mr. Charles Nutter, he's with Nexamp, too, and I'm sure he can give you some more details as far as how the financials break out his usage.
Yeah, so I've got that table. Um, the, the most important thing, I guess, to think about this is just in terms of dollars and cents. So whatever the school district is spending net with National Grid, that's what we base this kilowatt hour allocation on. So essentially, what's going to happen, or, or the way that this is laid out, is the school district would receive 26.8% of the value of the production of, of this array that we're constructing in Seaton. Um, so, so, you know, we're looking at it on an annual basis, we think that's going to be about 860,000 kilowatt hours. Now, the, the rate that National Grid, you know, sort of reimburses that electricity is going to be 17 cents for every kilowatt hour. So if you look at the, just by the table, you look at the net metering credit rate and multiply it by the offtaker kilowatt hour, you end up with that net metering credit value figure. And so that's the, the most important dollar figure, probably, on this table, besides the savings. But, so you're looking at a, a credit value in the first year of $146,000. So that would be the, yeah, essentially, just the, the dollar value of the kilowatt hours that are being, you know, allocated to your account. The way that I arrived at that number, the 146,000, is I took into account the high school's current usage. It came out to about $300,000 a year of spending. The CEC agreement that you guys have entered into, that came to about $80,000 in credit, so that brings that net spend down to about $220,000. And then, the sole, or the saltage system that, that's going to be installed on the roof, that's going to subtract the usage of, of the high school by about 350,000 kilowatt hours, and that production is going to be worth about $47,000. Either way, when you go $300,000 in original spending, take off $80,000 for the CEC credit, and then about $47,000 per year for that system on the roof, you end up with about $170,000 in spending on that high school account that can still be offset by these net metering credits. Does that fall? Because essentially, what I did there, so, is apply to buffer. So we don't want to give more credits in, in any given year than the school district would actually be able to use, right? So it's, you're going to get that dollar charged from National Grid, and, and anything applied to the bill comes right off the top, as Lindsay was explaining, and then, in the following month, we invoice you. So the reason I bring up that buffer is, is because, you know, it, it leaves the district with about $26,000 in costs that are not going to be either offset by the production of the panels, or offset by either this contract or the CEC contract. So, you know, that, that's a buffer, a area in which, you know, I, I believe that you expressed in our earlier meeting, a concern about, you know, if you want to do energy efficiency upgrades, are you get, going to get to a point where your spending is lower than, you know, all the credit you're getting applied from these projects? And, and sort of, that's where we want to design that buffer, so that we don't want to discourage, you know, the energy efficiency usage, and we want to make sure that the district is going to be able to use all the credits that are applied to the account each year.
So in this 20-year, 20-year agreement, are there any variable costs? Because we just have the, so we just have the flat rate that we're getting year over year. Are there any hidden variable costs in this agreement?
Uh, nope, no, no cost at all. It's, it's just the, the fixed discount percentage, and that's fixed for the life of the contractor, or for that 20-year period, and that won't change. And so, so one other thing about that is the, the value that I pointed to, sort of the value of each kilowatt, kilowatt hour that's produced at our project, that is tied to the National Grid electricity rate. So, you know, we show here an expected inflation in that electricity rate based on analysis that we've done and, and general trends. Electricity usually increases in price. So the value of that credit is going to rise and fall with what the school district is going to be paying for electricity. But the delta there, that percentage discount, will not. So if the district's costs increase at, you know, at any level, at 2%, this is where the savings would go, but if it gets even higher, you know, you're still going to receive that same discount, and you're going to end up with a larger sum total of savings.
Because you said that basically it means the same. So, and I'm sorry if I'm missing this.
No problem.
So in year one all the way through year 20, the estimated annual energy appears to decrease.
Yep, so, so the estimated annual energy is going to decrease a little bit, just based on the system degradation, the panels get a little bit.
So this is the energy that we're receiving from that particular?
Yep.
It's not our usage or anything like that?
Yeah, this is all, this is all based on the project production.
Okay.
And so, and so what I would say about the project in relation to that mechanical completion deadline that's in there, mechanical completion essentially means that all of our work is done, and at that point, we're just waiting on National Grid to connect the system. And so this project has all the permits and approval to interconnect with National Grid, and the more important deadline for us is actually in March, because we've got to be mechanically complete with this project in order to qualify for the current incentive level. So, and we sort of had a big mad rush at the end of last year to do very similar things, it's just an extended deadline. So, you know, I would say, in my experience, that, that's sort of what we're shooting for, and, and we're going to try to get the project in the ground as soon as we can.
Do you think any other municipalities that are signed up for this?
Uh, yeah, we, we do. So for this municipality, or see, this project, we are speaking with, in contract negotiations with Swansea and Attleboro. So they're going to take larger portions of, of the project, but, but we're moving along well with them. And, and signing up for the offtake, as it, you know, could be referred, is sort of the last hurdle to, to financing the project and, and beginning construction. But we are, yeah, very, very close to, you know, having everything signed up. And, and we have worked with a number of municipalities across the state, and, you know, including in this area. Within the past year, we've finished projects in Sutton and Upton, and worked with the town of Easton, Northbridge, Wheaton College, and a bunch more across the state.
And the earliest, I, I think you said, if this all goes through and everything's in production is March?
So that, that'll be, that's our latest deadline to have everything done in the ground. We expect, you know, there's usually some delays. It's been pretty bad this year, but that was sort of caused by that big rush at the end of last year. At that point, we're just waiting for National Grid, but there are no real curiosities about this project. We expect it to be interconnected in a few months.
And this is being offered to just the high school, or the?
Just the high school. Somerset Public was at the point where it wasn't, because we own our own panels, takes off a lot of the, the actual supply that we need, and it was, we also have an agreement with Clean Energy Collective for Somerset Public Schools, too, so it just wasn't, this didn't produce enough savings to lock in anything with the K8 side.
There is also an issue in pending Eversource rate case, which would create a, if, if Eversource were successful, would create a significant issue with these types of agreements, correct?
Ah, that's possible.
The cities of Newton and several other municipalities have said that the impact would cost them millions of dollars.
Yep, so, yeah, I mean, it, there are sort of things that are yet to be borne out. One, it is, yeah, beginning with Eversource and National Grid hasn't made that push yet, but it's, they're trying to essentially institute demand-based charges and other time of use rates that would, yes, sort of decrease what can be offset by, by some of these projects. In, in general experience, net metering rates have been grandfathered. When, when those rate cases get decided, when they've been decided in other states, if they've ever tried to sort of rewrite the rules for projects that have already, you know, signed offtake agreements like this, that's been the biggest source of, of pushback, and, and that hasn't happened yet. It hasn't sort of retroactively done, done anything bad to this project. So I would say, I mean, there is some degree of, of risk moving forward there, but I'm pretty confident that it wouldn't affect this, but, you know, can't say for 100% sure. But we're, we're not there quite yet, it is possible.
And there's nothing in this agreement that would give us an out with that to occur, correct?
Uh, that's correct. There's nothing specific in the agreement that would give an out in that circumstance. I don't know if it would necessarily be advantageous, I'm not, to the district, just because I don't know what else would sort of fall in place of the net metering agreement. I, I think that the, the project's reimbursement would be affected in the same way that the school districts would. We can absolutely, you know, talk about putting something in that agreement, but to, to my knowledge, it's not yet specifically protected against here.
So what you're saying is that it's, once an agreement is in place, it's unlikely that they would, this would, would affect an existing agreement?
Correct, yeah, so, yeah.
But any effect that it could have would diminish savings, but not cost the district anything?
I, I believe so, yeah. So if, if they change the rate structure, and, and it, I think it would apply the same way to the high school as it would to our project, and, and sort of, things would move together. But I don't think that, I mean, I, I don't really see a scenario in which it could cost the district more. It's possible, so, I mean, that is sort of, that kind of unknown circumstance is one reason that we also include the spending buffer. So if, if you get in a scenario where, oh, you know, the, the spending may come down for the school, but it doesn't come down accordingly, in terms of what the amount of dollars produced by the project, you know, that buffer saves you a little space. But I don't know enough about the specific rate changes. That would be interesting.
Well, as I understand it, what Eversource is asking for is to affect existing agreements. Now, whether the governing authority would allow them, allow that is, is the issue. Certainly, there's a lot of pushback from some of the municipalities around Boston who would be significantly impacted. What is, what is the timeframe for us to commit to this agreement?
So we'd be looking to sign the agreement during the month of August. It is, so, as I mentioned earlier before, just getting this, getting these offtake agreements in line is sort of what, what is the, the final gating step for us to sort of move forward, excuse me, and begin site preparation and, and construction and things of that nature. You know, we're looking to do it as soon as possible, but there, there isn't right now a drop in the deadline. Is, is there a, a timeframe that would conflict?
Well, we just decided our next meeting is the 29th of August.
Okay.
Does that jeopardize our ability to enter into this agreement?
Um, so it is possible, where we are, you know, I think ideally, it's, it's done before that, given that we have been negotiating with, with a few other larger offtakers, and, and, you know, have still been in contact with, with a few other municipalities. You know, we, we absolutely want to, you know, not, not on an agreement, but, you know, have the school district included in the project and, and included in the savings. But we would, you know, we would look to try to move forward. I, you know, I, if I, I wish I could answer that question very directly, but I, I do think that it could cause some issues. We're trying to move forward before the end of the month, I would say.
So even if we were to move, delay decision on this to the end of the month, I, I don't know what other information we would have on it, because the Eversource issue wouldn't be decided by then. I think it's just a, a decision that we have to make whether or not we're willing to move forward with the project, given that there, there may be some risk if, if this is not going to work. I don't know that much about solar, I won't pretend to, but I would imagine that on the state level, there's a lot of support for alternative energy projects, and I would think it.
Well, I, I'm not sure administratively that there is. I, the people who are now in the Baker administration are utility people, former employees of National Grid, or the lobbying entity that represents the utility companies. And so I'm not sure, at least on that side of it, how strong the support is for solar projects. There is, there is, there is the issue that the benefits are, are constantly decreasing, so that's why this project has to be completed by next March, because if it isn't, then there's a further drop in the benefits that are available. But I guess, I'm just concerned that we're, we're locking in for 20 years, basically 100% of our need, not having any idea what, in the next five or seven years, technology will provide. You know, we may have solar batteries that we could have out on the field that would store energy and be able to, you know, supply the high school with this, this amount of energy. I, I don't know, and what the cost would be, and all, all of those issues. So I feel as though I would want to understand this 100% to be sure that it was in our best interest to lock in 100% of our use for a 20-year period, which we've, which we've already done for about, I think, 67% of our energy. Maybe I'm just.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question? On this situation?
Yes, Mr. Mullin.
Anybody here read in the Providence Journal or the New York Times what the National Grid is trying to do in Providence, they realize that the people who have these sun catches aren't paying their first year, they're just paying for the electricity they use, but they're not paying for what the oil that they use in the, in the burners for the maintenance of the lines, for the maintenance of people. So they're trying now a, ask the government to have them have a look at that, so that they can raise the amount that you pay on the, the things you have on your roof. I, I keep an eye on that situation, because the utilities are not in there to get free electricity, they're there to make money.
Right.
Tell the woman who knows, I worked there 40 years.
And Mr. Mullin, I appreciate that. That's what I was getting at with my first question about doing a risk analysis. There's not enough information out there to make a decision on a 20-year contract. Usually, when we enter into a contract that long, there's some level of a risk analysis that can be done on those variables that happen within the market, and we unfortunately don't have that. I'm not saying that solar is not the way to go right now. I mean, we benefit from it in many different ways, we've invested in it on our roof. But to put all our eggs in one basket, so to speak, it's a little, it, just, I'd like some time to think about it as well. So Mrs. Gad, here, again, I appreciate your comment about, we're really not going to have any new information at the end of August, but I do think it's worth just taking a step back and thinking about what the risks are entering into a 20-year contract that'll outlast us, so.
Well, outlast, well, outlast me.
You know, you know.
Mrs. Almanaz?
I've got my head started.
I could just ask you what your thoughts are on this?
Um, I share the same concerns. I don't think our utility usage is going to drop, you know, 25% over the next 20 years, unless it's like some sort of catastrophic new. unless there's like some sort of catastrophic new, you know, technology that we just don't know of. If that's the case, then we're not going to be using as much, not going to be purchasing as much from select panels. We won't need as much. We won't be getting as much of a discount from our Clean Energy Collective. My job is to try to save money. That's what I'm trying to do tonight, but it really is up to the school committee at this point. I think Charles has answered what he can. I've answered what I can. It's really up to you.
I would just add one more thing, and thanks, Mrs., is that, you know, to your concern about some sort of bumping up against what the school district could actually take, you know, we're happy to revise that down if that's something that, you know, makes the district feel more comfortable in terms of, you know, yeah, leaving a little bit more wiggle room. It's not necessarily set in stone and certainly not our goal to make anyone uneasy sort of about a contract that they're entering into. So, you know, this is sort of, this is a projection based off 85% of the rest of the spending, but it's something that, you know, we can do it off 75% or something lower, you know, if that's one of the big concerns, you know, I think that would address some degree of that.
So would that be worthwhile, looking at a revised proposal that would kind of give us a little bit of a buffer? And you had said that you've never seen language that provides some kind of out clause or protection should, something comes up, but maybe take it back and see if there is something that could be in there. If they can't, then they can't, but at least we've looked at it in time to consider it at the end of the month and make a decision yea or nay.
Right, I'd like to, you know, propose that, you know, for our next meeting, if he has any more suggestions or if they want to come back with a vision, then we can look at it.
And that gives many more time to kind of sit with it. But we could also look at the next meeting about what the implications might be if it was adjusted to give us a little bit of...
Sorry, you know what? I actually misspoke here. I thought that it was more specific, so you'll turn to 4.2. I thought it was more specifically relating to this tariff that Eversource is trying to push through. But I think this may cover some of those concerns, and I apologize for not pointing to it earlier.
4.2, you said?
4.2 in the agreement, yeah. Regulatory decision made by the DPU or LDC, which refers to Eversource or National Grid, materially restricts seller's ability to deliver, materially restricts buyer's ability to receive net metering credits. I would say that this falls under that jurisdiction and, you know, it allows for a good faith negotiation in terms of altering the agreement in such a way that, you know, we could ensure that the school isn't losing money at worst, but, but yeah, sort of taking on additional risk. So I apologize for that, but...
Well, I read through this agreement and I read that paragraph and I wasn't, it wasn't clear to me that that language is sufficient to really address the issue. I don't know that what we're talking about in terms of their imposing additional charges necessarily restricts the seller's ability to deliver net metering credits. Doesn't say delivering net metering credits at the level proposed in Schedule C.
So I would even refer to, to there in terms of restricting the buyer's ability to receive the net metering credits. I think that, you know, a situation in which the credit value goes higher than the net costs of the school would fall under that category, but that's my interpretation read through.
So I'd like to suggest Mr. Gares could maybe meet with Mrs. Almanaz and wherever else she wants to propose on the side. I know I've been in a solar conversation before and we've looked at vendors. It will save some time and you can bring it back to the committee and give us a summary of some suggestions.
All right, are there any other thoughts?
And maybe look at a revised proposal, just to kind of adjust, give us some comfort level with the buffer being so big. If that's possible.
We can, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so the consensus is to defer this until our meeting on September 29th? Excuse me, August 29th?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, next item is the neighborhood forum parking issues. July 12th, Board of Selectmen meeting update. Before we, before we talk about this specific issue, I meant to mention when Mr. Larabee was talking about the special town meeting in Berkeley, I did attend the selectmen's meeting in Somerset on Tuesday afternoon and the Somerset selectmen, at the recommendation of the town administrator, have decided that they will not schedule a special town meeting, that it will simply allow our assessment, the budget and assessment as modified, be approved at the expiration of 45 days without any town meeting action. So that's, it's positive for us, so.
However, that wasn't included in that if they scaled at Berkeley, then we would have to adjoint meeting. This was just about the budget itself?
This was just about the next step in the process where both towns could schedule a special town meeting to approve the revised budget and assessment. And Somerset is not going to schedule a special town meeting at this step of the process. It's simply going to allow, allow it to be, go into effect at the end of 45 days, but it would still require a positive vote from Berkeley at their special town meeting.
Yeah, we approved the assessment contingent on the passage of the Prop 2.5 override. So since that failed, we would have to have a town meeting to approve the assessment.
So we did have a neighborhood forum. Did we report? I believe we reported on the forum at a previous meeting. But again, I did attend the selectmen's meeting subsequent to our last meeting at which the selectmen did approve the restrictions on parking. The parking will be limited to resident parking only between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, from August 15th to June 30th on Wardell Road, Luther Avenue, Hathaway Road, Williamson Drive, and Atlantis Avenue. So again, that's, that's a positive development and that signage should be in place before the beginning of the school year. So I don't know if there are any questions about that?
So what about guests that come to the school?
What about what?
Like when we have events and people coming to the school for...
The restrictions, pardon me?
For case rally, for example, where are people supposed to park? When we have events? So I'm just wondering.
Well...
Like as it is, it's very inconvenient that this was designed that visitors and disabled and elderly people have to walk a mile to get to the front entrance. And I know we can't put any, you know, parking spaces for that. So now what are we going to do for people to get parent involvement, to come to the school and they can't park anywhere to come to the school for events? If it's just resident parking?
They can park in our, they can park in our parking lot.
What about that access? I mean, have you realized how many people come to these things and are parked all the way up down the street?
Well, the restrictions are only in effect during the school day. So any evening activities, any weekend activities...
Case rallies during the day?
Yes, that's the only example that I can think of. I suppose there may be like the end of the year...
Awards day. But that, I don't know...
Awards...
What about graduation? We have no exceptions to any dates.
Yeah, it wouldn't apply to graduation. Graduation's at 5:00. The neighbors were very clear to indicate that they had no problem with parking in special events. Quite honestly, the problem is the students and their behavior.
But the issue is, you, how are people, how are they going to know which car is which? How is people not going to be tagged, regular parents parking on the street?
So I would think that during the day, it's not likely that we would have a great influx of people coming in. You may have a parent coming for a meeting or maybe a few parents coming up for a meeting, but we have parking on this side and on that side.
There's no parking over here. And again, this is just, the most people that come for meetings are parents that are, have children with special needs. And they're the ones that come in probably the most for meetings where maybe other parents do not, and they're the ones that are inconvenienced the most, and there is...
But you're talking there, Melissa, about one or two parents at a time and there should be, there should be space for them in the parking lot.
There is no parking over here, of course. All the parking is over there.
Right.
Why can't they park here?
Because teachers park there and other people park there, and there's not one visitor spot to pick up a sick kid. And again, I understand we're all healthy on this board, but I'm talking about people, and I have heard numerous complaints of people that are elderly. Some grandparents may be not as healthy as you, Mr. Gares, and there are people that are disabled that cannot walk in the rain and the snow all the way over there to come to the main office.
So then maybe to look at that, addressing that concern, we can, the administration can consider identifying...
We have, mm-hmm.
Some studies.
I've just been bringing up, people have little babies. People have babies that have kids in the high school. You walk up to the truck and all the way through...
No, if we can designate some additional visitor parks...
I've been asking for this for many, since this opened up. And I know we have to wait until, like Mrs. Gornos said, we have to wait for the building to be approved before we even consider that?
Well, I don't see any reason why we couldn't establish some handicap parking in this parking lot.
We do. We have several handicap spaces here.
Okay, so...
Maybe visitor parking.
All right, well, that's, I think, a different issue, so we can, we can pursue that. I, I mean, I have been here, when the building was under construction, parking was a problem because the students were taking up most of the parking on Luther Avenue and on Wardell and on Hathaway. And I wasn't inclined to park in the St. Thomas Moore parking lot because of the issues that had arisen there. So I would sometime, sometimes have to park on Hathaway Road in order to come to a construction subcommittee meeting.
We do get visitors. I mean, I'm saying, we do have people that do come into the business to pick up. I mean, we looked at why we have an attendance policy and we have kids that have been out sick. People do pick up kids that are sick. And we do have bad weather in New England, and it is not necessary to have that answer. It should be just a quick come in, get your kid and leave. And it shouldn't be, oh, I need a babysitter because I don't want to walk my infant a mile in the rain to pick up my kid from school. It just doesn't make any sense.
Well, unfortunately, my observation is that those people that are going to pick up their children park right in front of the front door and block the driveway. So, but we have a pickup area right out here.
You have to come in. You can't leave your car parked to come in, to sign that, only here.
I think in that pickup area during the school day, you can pull in there and park your car and come into the building to pick up the sick child and go back to your car in that, in that pickup area right there, that...
Okay. That was my impression. I've done that before.
Yeah, I, I, so, I mean, I've even seen, the mailman won't even pull up to that, that, you know, drop off area to park his mail truck. He parks right in front of the front door. So at least, at least I've observed some, I shouldn't blanket that, but I've observed the mail truck parked there just to go in and drop off the mail, but...
And I'm trying to be sensitive to the neighbors. I'm just saying, for anyone that's lived here for a long time, I mean, when I went to school here in the 80s, nothing has really changed of kids being on the street and the things that they do is the same things back in the day. I don't know why.
Oh, I don't think, I don't think you're correct there, Mrs. Tara. You didn't hear what the neighbors said about the behavior, the obscene language, the obscene gestures, taught neighbors, the...
Right, but we used to have, when we started with the security here, we do not have those positions anymore. We used to have Harry and Sue that used to walk around and keep everyone in line and chase kids that were taken off and skipping school. Now they don't have anyone, and we should have just a resource officer or someone there during the times that kids come into school and leave. It would have been a simple solution and it would have handled it, but now I think it's just going too far. However, I will support this since the work has been done and...
So I think we're getting off agenda, so in case I ask you...
Okay, so, well, this was, this was a report on, on our neighborhood forum and the progress that's been made, so. Anyway, let's, if that's settled, we will look into the situation with handicap parking. But the next item in visitor park, summer retreat agenda.
Do you want, do I start it? Okay. So I think it was sent to everyone with the information for this meeting. I don't know if we have, we don't have hard copies right here.
Oh, I did have, I know some people, did you just pass this? I know some, some of you use it on your computers, but I did print out a few copies.
Thank you.
The only thing, the only thing to mention is Sheriff Gee said it's going to be in the culinary arts room because that's where the food is going to be prepared and rather than truck it all the way down to the cafeteria for only eight people. And only eight people in the cafeteria will be lost. It will be more intimate in the culinary arts room.
Okay, so we can change that.
So the goal that are important about this was looking to see, carry over some of the discussions we had last year in improving our effectiveness as a school committee. So the first part of that agenda is looking at maximizing our leadership potential, part two, if you will. And we've had a lot of discussion about how we can make these meetings more efficient. And so that's one of the things that we want to talk about at the start of this session. And we can talk a little bit more about that in detail, but Stephanie has some things that she can add there. She's going to kind of facilitate that discussion, looking at how we can really bring the focus back to the students and what we do here every day. We'll have a little break, and then the next part of that meeting, once we kind of develop or optimize the way that we operate in our meetings from, from meeting to meeting, we can start looking at, okay, what are the top priorities that we have to look at this year? And so we didn't just develop a strategic plan so that it would sit on the shelf. We thought that it would be appropriate at that time to have Superintendent Schoolover take this strategic plan, give us an overview, look at where our goals and his goals intersect with that strategic plan and identify a wig, if you will, a widely important goal that we really want to focus on. Because a lot of times when we try to do too many things at once, we don't succeed in accomplishing anything. So what are some strategic objectives that fit within each of our, the district's strategic goals, the superintendent's goals and the school committee's goals that we can all work together on achieving over the next year? So we hope that that would be kind of an interactive discussion to try to identify what that is and come up with an action plan for that. And then we'll break for lunch, and then in those discussions of trying to identify where we have some things that we have to work on, how can we build capacity? How can we bring other people in? And so I would, I was offering to take the second piece about sharing some ideas of how we can build capacity within this district, even by bringing outside of the school. And so I've looked at other districts and kind of, we'll share some of those ideas. But again, that's meant to be collaborative. We can share what other districts have done, best practices. But at the end of that meeting, we're hoping to come up with next steps in... But at the end of that meeting, we're hoping to come up with next steps in each of these sections so that there's an actual action plan that we can follow going forward. So that was our idea in putting this together. I don't know if you want to add anything, Stephanie or Jeff?
No, just that as we're having the dialogue, really the purpose of this workshop and retreat is to focus on big picture items that we may not cover in our regular daily meetings, weekly, monthly meetings, I should say, I feel like they're daily. So it gives us the opportunity to take a step back, look at everything from 30,000 feet, see how we want to move going forward. As Julie mentioned, she's been having some conversations with, with some resources. I have gone and gone back to the MASC to get some best practices that we'll share with the group. I will ask for that first portion of the, of the retreat. There is just a, a protocol worksheet that I did get from the MASC. If, if the committee members could just take 10 minutes between now and Saturday morning to just take a look at it and, and give some feedback on there. Really, just a checklist and a check-in of how we're doing on various parts of our meetings, various parts of how we run. And then we can use this information to have a dialogue on Saturday. So I'm going to pass this down, and again, if the committee could bring it with them on Saturday, that would be great.
And I think that even if you're not attending, if you could take a look at it and offer that feedback, it would be something that would be good.
Yes. The main feedback I like to offer, because I have attended before, is perhaps maybe a list of what has actually accomplished from these workshops. Because, for example, how we do time management in meetings, nothing's really has changed. So I mean, I would like to see, if you're going to do this everywhere, what has changed that, that is exclusive to those workshops that is not accomplished in the meeting? I, I would like to see that.
Well, I hope you can attend on Saturday and contribute to that.
I will not be attending, but I would like to see what has changed from the last time I was on there and what's the progress of that.
Well, I think that it's-
Exclusive. Nothing that's talked about in the meetings.
So I think that one of the things that we are trying to do to address that, Melissa, is that we're looking to have a, an action plan in each of these items. So that we can deliver to the school committee.
I would like everyone to know, since we started these workshops, what has been accomplished exclusively from these workshops that is not done during the meeting?
Melissa, you can put your feedback on this sheet. It actually asks, it's all about how we do business. So if you can't attend on Saturday, you can give your feedback on that form, and then we can take that into consideration.
Well, I mean, I can think of, I can think of an excellent example. At one of the first retreats that we had, we had the superintendent from New Hampshire come down and talk about strategic planning and the impact that it had in his district. And as a result, we did a strategic planning process where we had a community forum of the kind that he described, and I think that was a very positive outgrowth of, of that particular retreat event. He also talked about the-
Advisory?
Pardon me?
Advisory.
The advisory program. We saw our videos of some of the sessions, which led to members of the committee pushing very hard to get, along with the superintendent, get an advisory program established in our school district, which we now have done. We're continuing to tweak it, but those are two things that immediately come to mind that were, that came as a result of one of these retreat programs.
And I think one of the other things is that, prior to starting those retreats, we didn't really come up with goals that we would kind of aim for. And we say, well, we don't accomplish all our goals. But I still think it's important to set before the school committee some objectives that we hope to accomplish in any given year. So we're not just going through the motions. We said, you know, let's try. And I think any type, anybody can set a goal and fall short of it, but I think it's still kind of a, something that we can all reach for. So I think those are three things, you know, setting goals, we really worked on that one of the retreats. The advisory, I think that was a really eye-opening look at that. We had nev-, I had never seen that before when it was presented. I think, and the strategic planning process, to kind of see how other schools have done that. So I, I think that's been of value. Somebody else may come up with something else that they feel valuable.
I find the mass conferences cover the same things.
But not everybody can go to those.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
All right, so we have this form that we've been asked to complete and bring with us on Saturday. We have the agenda. Does anyone have any comments about the proposed agenda? Okay. The next item we have is the regional planning board consultant. You recall that last, our last meeting, we asked that $2,500 be encumbered from the surplus in fiscal '17, and that we would revisit whether to expend that amount on a consultant for the regional planning board. So, Mrs. Gagliotti, do you want to discuss that?
Well, I, I think that as, we've kind of suspended our work on the regional planning board, but I, I would reiterate that I believe the committee took the study as far as it could go. And to take it to the next level, I think we need, both communities need an answer as to what could be the potential benefits or, or lack thereof, or even deterrence to a number of different forms of further regionalization, whether it be K-12, or whether it be Somerset, K-12, and Berkeley remaining 9-12. We need to see what those financial implications are, and I, and just have that information before we decide what to do next.
I agree with that.
So I think having someone who has worked in the state level, looking, analyzing formulas, looking at how state budgets work, even having that outside perspective, even if all of a sudden one of us figured out how to make the formula do what we think it needs to do, I think having that outside perspective that can look at what's been done in other districts is very valuable. And, and to have that kind of impartial look at it. So I would say that if we can afford, I know we put it kind of on the back burner until we got to the end of the year, I think it would be money well spent.
I think since we've encumbered the capital, I, I think at this point in time, given the failure of the Prop 2 and 1/2 in Berkeley, that being able to present the taxpayers of both communities with an alternative to, to a Prop 2 and 1/2 is sensible. And I'm very curious to see, you know, how this is all going to turn out in the end. Again, our numbers were so sporadic that it'll be interesting to see after the consultant has a chance to work with our data, you know, what conclusions we can draw from, from the work we've done. But we're not going to be able to do that without, without professional assistance at this point. But one, one thing, obviously, there's, there's a pretty dramatic shift in educational spending in the, in the town of Berkeley as a result of the Prop 2 Act failure. So we may need to do a little bit of groundwork to build the current year of the FY '18 before we get it, give it to the consultant to review. So there probably would be a necessity to meet once or twice-
Sure.
-in order to get that piece of the work done.
And we could also meet with Mr. Hatch and kind of share what we have so far, have him look at that as kind of a preliminary, and he can also tell us what other missing pieces of information that he would like in order to do that group's analysis completely.
Sure, but our reality has shifted just slightly in Berkeley, so.
So I would recommend that we move forward on it. Just, it's been over five years now. Part of the agreement was that after five years, we would review where the district currently stands and if there is, if there are any reasons to adjust its current structure. So I think it's worth giving a go.
Definitely.
All right. Just to be candid, I, I have to say that my perspective on this has changed somewhat. But the group has done considerable amount of work, and I think we need to come to a conclusion. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve up to, what do we say, $2,500 for the-
To engage Roger Hatch?
Yeah, to engage Roger Hatch in the study of a possible further regionalization option.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made by Mrs. Gagliotti, seconded by Mrs. Field. Is there any further discussion? Any outs of further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. We're in a budget crisis, but we can afford this.
So we have five in the affirmative and one in the negative.
And I just want to add that this isn't, I think, I know I'm going into it, and I know most of the regional planning board are going into it without a preconceived notion as to what the outcome will be. I think it's necessary to, for us to have information. No decision will be made, in any case, without going to the communities. But it's really important that we have detailed information in order for us to consider.
And the use of encumbered funds is somewhat restricted, if I'm correct on that? Since we encumbered the funds, the $2,500 from last year's budget, it's, its usage is more restricted than money in the FY '18 budget, correct? We can't just use it-
It has to be used for what it was voted on.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
So next is K update from Somerset. Is there anything to report, Mrs. Tara?
We had a meeting on July 24th, and our main business was talking about policy. And Robin did a wonderful job of making a rubric. I had asked her if she could kind of follow the template that the library uses. When I was the library trustee, I thought it was very helpful. And I was hoping maybe if the high school school committee would like to look at it as well, it kind of has a revision of dates of, for example, I can pass this on. So it would say exactly when we have dates and when we should look at it to have it revised. Sometimes you don't realize you haven't seen a policy in five years, and you should revise it. And then you kind of like put this forward in every meeting. You can go to a budget subcommittee or to the board itself. So we have everything listed, including, we were just asking for exclusive to the high school or K-8. So it was a little smaller of a template when I was on the library. So I can just pass that down. That was just what we've got going, and we're going to work off that to make sure all the policies are up to date in a timely fashion. And we actually have assignments of reviewing them as we go. And Robin did excellent, was her own summer study job, unfortunately, but thank you again. That was kind of our main thing. We had looking at reading scores and updates at our next meeting scheduled, and we also approved the position. And we scheduled our annual inspections. That was pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. And we introduced our new elementary principal at North-
Oh, that's right. Did we? You want to explain a little bit about that?
Sure. Paul Manchester is the new principal at North Elementary. She's coming to us from Dayton Elementary School, where she's served as the principal for the past four years. And before that, she was a principal in Bedford 4 or 5. So she's been, she started about two weeks ago. I think that was actually her first day, the 24th. And she's been in the building every day since then, get, just getting her feet wet and participating in our leadership team meetings this week, and we're really excited to have her there.
Okay, Mr. Giliducci, do you have anything to report?
Yes, we did Mr. Lynch's evaluation for the year and it came out efficient. The other thing is the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We are pleased to tell you that the department found your district to be in compliance with all the criteria monitored in your district during mid-cycle review. The findings of the department are now available online at the website Monitoring Systems. You and your entire staff are to be congratulated for your success in implementing the requirements included in these criteria. And this was in reference to the special ed program, so it came off very, very well. The other thing, we, the school committee okayed the Berkeley Community School Improvement Program and the Berkeley Middle School Improvement Program, which were presented at the meeting. Also, there's been a new kindergarten handbook developed and a preschool handbook developed for the community school. It was a short meeting.
Okay, so those are the school improvement plans that you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Flarvey, you have anything?
The finance part of that same meeting that was held on July 24th was actually rather long. As a result of the past, or the failure of the Prop 2 and 1/2 override, the school committee had to make a decision on how to adjust to the $547,000 budget cut that was passed by town meeting and proposed by our board of selectmen and our finance committee. So given the number of choices as to what we could restore with the resources we had available to us, the school committee voted to preserve the class sizes. We have reasonably low class sizes in Berkeley. But in preservation of those class sizes, the elimination of all of our UA, and not all of our UA, music, library, and art in both schools, as well as elimination of Spanish, a math specialist, and a special ed teacher were all put into effect. In addition, the, the school day has now been shifted. The school day will start later in Berkeley for both the elementary school and for our middle school. So it was a reasonably difficult meeting. There were no good choices that could be made, and unfortunately, those were the choices that needed to be made and were voted by the school committee at the recommendation of our administration. In response to the decisions that were made, a number of parents have banded together in order to try to find an independent solution. And as a result, they are actively trying to fundraise on behalf of themselves to deliver capital to the school district to pay for fixed expenses. The purpose for paying for those fixed expenses is to give the district flexibility to possibly look at the ability to return some of those specialists. Obviously, UA is an important part of every school district, so parents are trying very hard to go ahead and try to figure out a way to do that. So the capital that they're trying to raise is $140,000. And as of like 17 minutes ago, they, they have pledges totaling $78,793.67. And they've been actively trying to do this for nine days. So they're optimistic that they can reach their goal by the next school committee meeting, which is August 21st in Berkeley. But it's, it's actually somewhat refreshing to see parents and citizens step to the plate and try to find a solution to a very complex problem. Certainly, the override would have prevented all of this, but since the override has failed, it's, it's somewhat heartwarming, if I can't think of a better word, to, to see how people are responding and how serious they're trying to work to solve this problem independently.
And so what's the contact information?
Well, the, there is an email that's been set up by the coordinate, the person who's coordinating the fundraising effort is Heather Sterling, and her email is berk, B-E-R-K, fundraising, all one word squished together, at gmail dot com. There's also a Facebook page, because we love Facebook in Berkeley. Was Berkeley Fundraising in Support of Education. But of course, Mr. Pierce, if you'd like to talk to Heather directly, I'm sure I can arrange that for you.
The other, the other thing is, there is a stature in law that does allow this. It, we receive from, we have the same corporate counsel as the region. We have Leo. And there is a general law, so the money that is collected will go to the town treasurer only for that purpose. No other people can touch that money. The money will be set aside. And of course, the administration will be able to withdraw that money so the teachers can be brought back.
Yeah, the purpose is to raise money to pay for a fixed expense because you cannot fund teachers' salaries through fundraising. But you can certainly pay for a fixed expense, so it's a utility. a utility bill. And by taking that, that burden off of the district, there's capital that could be reallocated through budget transfer.
How much would $140,000, so would that bring back two teachers?
Well, under, under the, with the information that we've gotten from Mr. Lynch, the $140,000 donation, if it was able to be achieved, would be paired up with the $27,000 reduction in the region's budget, along with, it's actually 28, but the amount that was provided by the finance committee was just a hair under that. That would be coupled up with savings in unemployment costs, because we are carrying a significant amount of unemployment costs right now. And in addition to that, Mr. Lynch has made the decision to not utilize all of our school choice capital, assuming that there was going to be some school choice students that would leave because of the shifting of the school day and the elimination of our UA programs in art, music, and library. So if we were able to start, if we were able to get to 140, he would feel comfortable with return, with utilizing some of that capital, assuming there wouldn't be as many school choice defections. And with all of those sources of revenue coupled together, he's confident we could save four of the nine eliminated positions. And that would return our school day to its, its normal length.
I heard too, was there an engineering technology teacher at the middle school?
That was the math specialist, yeah.
That was the math specialist? Okay. All right. So. Sorry, it's such a long... So all right. So there, is there any public input?
I got a question. I read either in the, one of the handouts, we got, the meetings or in the paper, that if you, Somerset Berkeley and Somerset High, High School taking it together on the budget, it will be decided by the state. Is that true? What the, what the breakdown will be?
Well, we're in the second step of the process, which are special town meetings, and as was described earlier, Berkeley is having their special town meeting at the end of August.
But if that doesn't, that doesn't work. Is it true that the state can determine who's going to pay what?
Well, only at the, only at the fourth step. The next step after the, this round of town meetings would be a joint town meeting.
Yep.
It would be called by the Regional School Committee.
Right.
And would be open to voters from both towns. And once again, we would have the opportunity to approve the budget and the assessment, and a majority would rule so that, and it, but if the assessment were not passed at that joint town meeting, then the Commissioner of Education would decide what the fiscal '18 budget would be for the Regional School Committee.
So it will be, at that point, it's out of our hands. Is that correct?
Well, the ultimate decision is, would be with the Commissioner of Education, yes. I mean, I'm sure he would hear from us as to what we thought he ought to approve.
So, all right. It could be determined by someone other than this group in, in Berkeley. It could be determined by the state. That's the point I'm giving at. It would be out of our hands.
But, but I think it's important to note that in Berkeley, everyone is very aware, thanks to Mrs. Albernaz and Mr. Pierce and Mr. Schoonover, that if we, in Berkeley, if we decide to not pass the assessment in the special town meeting that we're having on August 28th, you can get to Berkeley, you can sit in the little area to the side, we'd love to have you. But if it's not passed on August 28th, then the joint town meeting that would be held shortly thereafter would have the assessment this year on the statutory formula, not the formula we've been using all...
So the bottom line is the state will do it, we have to accept it, what the better, what the breakdown is.
The bottom, the bottom line is that in Berkeley, it would be dis, not advantageous for us to go to a joint town meeting, because it would, it would cost our community $125,000 more. So instead of a $27,000 reduction, $28,000 reduction roughly in our assessment, it would actually be a hundred, a hundred thousand roughly increase. And given the, the budget constraints that we're already under, that would not be a, a suitable outcome for us. So I think that it's highly unlikely that we get to step three, but you are correct. There's a scenario in which it could get that far. But I can tell you from where I sit, and having sat through our selectmen's meetings and our finance committee meeting in Berkeley, there's not a person in town that wants to see it get to step three.
So there incentive, there's an incentive built into the way that the formula is to not get to that, step three, never mind step four.
Correct.
Because if we do go to step three, then Berkeley automatically, even if we were to give them the same assessment as last year, it's calculated differently, and that means they have to pay more. So there's an incentive to resolve it within the two towns.
Mr. Kosikis?
I got a question for our distinguished folks from Berkeley. If I remember right, the first time that we, when we regionalized, we had six years of budgeting from you folks that you folks planned for. Now, does this mean that instead of going for another six or five or whatever, that will this do it like every year?
So with the failure of the override, the plan that was developed that would have provided a six-year funding window for the high school under certain assumptions, a 4% increase cap and other, other assumptions, at, at this point in time, the town of Berkeley, essentially, this high school is now the same as BP, where on an annual basis, the town receives its assessment bill and has to figure out how to raise the necessary funds from general taxation. We no longer have a, an override base to draw from, at least not an override base that's large enough to support the entirety of the, the assessment. So going forward, in the absence of an override, the town of Berkeley will have to address whatever the annual increase is, whatever the increase in assessment for the operating part of the budget from taxation. I did go before our board of selectmen last Wednesday and asked them if they would entertain another override option for next spring, so for the spring of 2018, in order to try to address budgetary concerns for 2019. And they did provide me with some guidelines, and I am scheduled to go back and see them in October. So I will keep this committee and those of you in the public informed as to how that progresses. Thank you.
Dean did hope numerous forums to get the people to be aware of what should have happened. And the amazing thing was, at the town meeting, we had a majority, well over 70 or 80% of the people voted the override. The stickler team, when it went on the ballot in July, it was voted down. So we did have the approval at the town meeting, and then at the election, it got voted down. So unfortunately, the people who were at the town meeting, who did vote for it and said they wanted that...
Didn't show up.
Didn't show up. And unfortunately, after Dean had worked so hard, and he had been holding all these forums, and Mr. Pierce, Superintendent Schoonover, and Lindsay were there at every meeting to go over the, the things with the people so they understood it. And it was on the television programs, and it was all discussed throughout the, throughout the town. Fortunately, we have a lot of educated-minded people in Berkeley who have stepped forward. And at the meeting, Dean said, when we were there together at our last school committee meeting, the women got up and said, we will raise the money. And darn if they happened, and I've already pledged to them. So they are, they are drawing money, donations from people, and they will come up at least with the 140. They're already more than halfway there. So they're working really, really hard, and it goes a lot in the people who really are concerned about education in Berkeley.
The vote was very close, too. I think it was 820 to 707.
Good job.
113.
Yes. Yes.
Very close.
I have that number tattooed on my arm. I get it every day. And I think that...
Yeah, I was going to say, at the town meeting, we had, what, 1,000 people were at the town meeting. In min, in minimally, I don't think 100 noes went up on the vote. It was like unanimous. Mr. Pierce, you were there, and you were there. And it wasn't even close. And so unfortunately, they didn't show up at the poll July 15th. And we told them they could all go and vote. They didn't have to go to the town meeting, but they could go to the town clerk, get an absentee ballot if they knew they were going to be on vacation or going to be away, and they could vote. And again, we gave them all the ammunition. Unfortunately, the gun didn't fire.
So do you people feel comfortable that it's going to pass this year?
We're optimistic. I, I, I think that there's a, a high probability that the assessment passes at the special town meeting on August 28th as far as an override is concerned. I think you're certainly, you don't do anything thinking you're going to fail, but I think that it's still so early in the process. We have to come up with a structure that's going to be sensible, not only for the district, but also the taxpayers in Berkeley. So as I mentioned, we'll, we'll provide a copious amount of updates throughout the year.
My thought is, we know what we want, but we don't know what the state will do.
Correct, but I think that we are going to take every step we can and never get that far.
Good. Thank you.
All right. So the next item we have is to consider acceptance of open session minutes of June 27, 2017. I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved?
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Field and seconded by Mr. Larrabee. Is there any discussion on those minutes of June 27? Any absence of discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Inanimate.
So five in favor and one abstention. Next is to consider acceptance of the executive session minutes of June 27, 2017. I'll accept a motion to that effect.
So moved?
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Field and seconded by Mr. Larrabee. Is there any discussion? Any absence of discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Not too much.
All right. One abstention. And finally, consider acceptance of open session minutes of July 19, 2017.
So moved?
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Field, seconded by Mr. Larrabee. Any discussion? Any absence of discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. All right. So at this point, we have scheduled an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Somerset Teachers Association Units A and B and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Clerical and Custodial Units, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of this committee, and the chair so declares. The committee will not return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. May I have a motion to that effect?
So moved?
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Gagliotti and seconded by Mr. Larrabee. Any discussion? Wall call vote is required. Mr. Giladucci?
Aye.
Mrs. Field?
Aye.
Mr. Larrabee?
Aye.
Mrs. Gagliotti?
Aye.
Mrs. Terra?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, everyone, for coming.